Registered to make comments today who have joined us. So, we should be ready to go. So, for the court reporter now, ma'am, we are ready to get on the record. So, we are now on the record today. Good afternoon. It is July 9th, 2020. It is 12:25 PM and we're underway in a virtual public hearing in file number WR20200264. And I'm going to look here on my screen to make sure I can see the court reporter and make sure, could you give me a thumbs up or otherwise indicate, okay, she's good to go. All right. So, this matter concerns Raytown Water Company's request for an annual operating revenue increase. The Missouri Public Service Commission has set this time aside for a local public hearing on Raytown Waters' request. My name is Janet Jacobs. I'm the regulatory law judge assigned to this matter. As everyone is aware, this public hearing is being conducted by video conference and some participants are connected by phone and others are connected by Internet. To conduct this hearing today, I'll need to keep an eye on a couple of different monitors as well as my cellphone. And this means that at times, I'm going to be looking off to the side. I just want you to understand that despite this unusual setting, you do have my full attention today. This is a formal proceeding which is being transcribed by a court reporter. I'll be monitoring the quality of the audio to help the court reporter preserve this hearing for the record. If any of the lines connected to the conference today are too noisy, I'll need to mute those lines. I appreciate your patience today as we adapt to this new kind of public forum. I'd like to introduce the commission. We have with us today Commissioner Maida Coleman and we also have Commissioner Kenny with us as well. And I didn't know that Commissioner Kenny was going to join us, so I apologize for fumbling that intro a little bit. The Missouri Public Service Commission regulates the rates charged by investor-owned utility companies in Missouri to ensure that those rates are just and reasonable. The commission also regulates the quality of service and safety of the operations of investor-owned utilities. And there are five members of the commission. So, I would just like to give the commissioners an opportunity to make any opening remarks if they would like to at this time. Commissioner Kenny, was there anything that you wanted to say, sir?
Well, I would just like to thank those in attendance. I know it's very difficult. And Judge, I thank you for working through all these problems and have this case. I'm very familiar with the Raytown Water District, family owned, and I've been in this area for, since 1979, so I'm very familiar with them. Appreciate those that have comments to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And Commissioner Coleman, did you have anything to say today, ma'am?
I'd like to welcome all those that are participating today. I thank those of the general public that has tuned in and I appreciate this opportunity they've been given to voice their opinions. And thank you, Judge. That's all.
Thank you very much. So, please know that the comments that are being made today are being made to the full commission. The court reporter is transcribing this hearing, so all of the commissioners can review and read the comments that will be made. I'm now going to ask that counsel for the parties enter an appearance for the record, so you can just provide your name to the court reporter and spell your name if it's the kind of name that people usually don't spell correctly. My understanding is that no attorney has entered an appearance for Raytown Water Company in this matter. Is there counsel here today for Raytown? Okay. It doesn't appear that there's counsel for Raytown today. So, counsel for commission staff, please.
Yes, thank you, Judge. This is Travis Pringle, legal counsel for the Public Service Commission staff. My contact information is 200 Madison Street, PO Box 360, telephone number 573-751-4140.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pringle. And do we have, I believe we have Mr. Kleiser here for the Office of the Public Counsel?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is John Kleiser, Missouri Office of the Public Counsel. Business address, 200 Madison Street, 650 Jefferson City, Missouri, 65101.
Thank you very much. So, the way this is going to work today is I'm going to call in the people who are listed on the registration information that was given to me by the parties. When I call your name, first, you're just going to need to check to make sure that you aren't muted, so I'll be patient with each other while we do that. If you are connected by the Internet, you'll see a microphone symbol on your screen. If it's red, that means that you're on mute, so you'll want to unmute yourself before you speak up. I'll place you under oath and ask you to state and spell your name, and then you can offer your comments to the commission. After you've made your comments, the commissioners may have some questions for you, and it's also possible that the attorneys present for the parties may also want to ask some follow-up questions. The purpose of the hearing today is so the commission can hear from you. The commissioners won't be able to answer your questions about this case because they have to remain impartial until after the evidence is presented at the evidentiary hearing. If you do have questions, there's information posted on the commission's website about this case, including information about how you can submit any questions that you may have. Okay. So, it looks like we're ready to get to the part of this proceeding where we call upon those who have registered to address the commission today. So, I'm going to start with the first person on my list. Do we have Shelley Schuman on the line today? Okay. I don't see an indication that such a person has joined us, so we'll see if she is able to join us later. Has Mr. Jerome Barnes been able to connect to the call today? Okay. And do we have Ms. Sandra McKee here? I did speak to Ms. LaRoe earlier when she connected, so I believe we do have a Jennifer LaRoe on the line. Ms. LaRoe, did you want to speak up?
It's actually pronounced LaRue, but you are closer than most people.
Okay. So, you're actually the next registrant on the line, ma'am. So, did you want to address the commission today?
I was under the impression that I was going to be hearing some information and then perhaps commenting on that, so I apologize that this is different than what I anticipated. About the only questions that I have or comments I can make--
So, if you want to-- Right. Yeah. If you actually wanted to make comments, I swear you in first. So, that's why I was asking if you wanted to make comments to the commission.
I have a question, not really a comment.
Okay. So, as I said before, this forum allows members of the public to make comments to the commission. You should be able to get some information if you go to the website for the commission about how you can submit some specific questions about the case.
Okay. Then, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. So, is Ms. Sandra Jones connected to the call today? And is there, I believe there was someone by the name of Reece Champagne who had connected. Sir, are you on the line?
Yeah. Here, I'm here.
Okay. So, we can hear you, so if you'd like to raise your right hand, I can swear you in and you can address the commission, sir.
Okay. Yeah. My right hand's up.
Thank you so much. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the comments you're about to give are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Could you please state your name and spell your name for the record, sir?
My name is Reece Champagne. First name, R-E-E-S-E, and Champagne, C-H-A-M-P-A-G-N-E.
Okay. Thank you very much. What would you like to tell the commission?
Basically, like, I've never done one of these meetings before, so I'm thinking, I don't know exactly who I'm talking to, but I just want to make some comments about, like, raising, like nickel and diming rates is what I see it as. Like, over time, span of 10 years, you nickel and dime, you get a dollar. And I never see those prices go down, so if over 10 years, the price goes up by 80%, but they cut their expenses in half, we're still paying that 80% extra bill while they don't even need that extra money. Like, it's never going to go down from what I've seen in my life, so I just oppose the increase just in general because I just see it as nickel and diming when they need to do, like, we should be the last people that they ask for money from. Like, they need to restructure their organization or do anything they need to do before they talk to us.
Okay. Sir, do you have anything in addition that you wanted to add?
Uh, no, that's about it.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Champagne today?
Uh, no, I don't, but I thank you, Mr. Champagne, for appearing via web and commenting.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Champagne. Public input is very important and your concerns are noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you so much. Do counsel for the parties have anything they wanted to ask Mr. Champagne?
No questions from staff, Judge.
Thank you so much.
John from the OPC. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. So, I'm going to see if we have any other folks that have connected to the call. Do we have Amiz Ann Salisbury on the line to address the commission today? Okay. And what about Darlene Reed? And Cara Diffie? Is there a person by the name of Ebony Peterson who has joined the call today to address the commission? I have a couple of other people who just provided a first name. So, is there a Leanne who's joined us today? Or Tereya? Okay. So, those are all of the names that I had for individuals who were registered to address the commission, so it doesn't look like we have had any additional people join the call here. So, I will make one last call for anyone who might be here, present in our meeting today, who wanted to address the commission about this case. Was there anyone who wanted to address the commission on the record?
This is Jennifer LaRue. I do have a comment I would like to make, if I may.
Okay, Ms. LaRue, could you just go ahead and raise your right hand for me?
It is raised.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the comments you are about to give are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Could you state your name and spell your name for the record, ma'am?
My name is Dr. Jennifer LaRue. My last name is spelled L apostrophe capital H, E-U-R-E-U-X.
Okay. Thank you very much. What would you like to tell the commission today, ma'am?
A comment I would like to make, I've been a Raytown resident now for about seven years and I own property here in Raytown. My comment is that I think the water department needs to focus, if this increase is to go through, need to focus on infrastructure. It seems like the system here in Raytown is fairly consistently breaking down. We have water main breaks, we have backups, we have all kinds of issues that occur in different parts of Raytown, and I would like to see if this increase goes through, that they spend some of those monies on improving infrastructure, which is extremely important to those of us that own property here, even just people who are renting, because the infrastructure often fails and then the costs are passed on to the homeowners, which then are passed on to the renters. And my comment is, I'd like to see infrastructure here in Raytown improve because the system is greatly aging.
Thank you very much, Ms. LaRue. Were those all your comments today, or do you have anything else to add?
No, Your Honor, that was it.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Ms. LaRue?
No questions, but thank you, Dr. LaRue. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. LaRue.
Thank you.
And did counsel for any of the parties have any questions for Ms. LaRue?
No questions from staff. Thank you, Judge.
I have no questions, Your Honor. However, I believe that Dr. LaRue had mentioned she had a question herself earlier. I know that we can't have that asked here, but I believe that we had worked out a system that this customer had a question, and I was hoping that we might be able to tell her. Travis, I'm leaning on you a little bit to know exactly what the email--
Yes. The email address for questions, raytowncomments@psc.mo.gov.
And that would have been the same email address that Ms. LaRue would have used to register for this session today, is that right?
That is correct, Judge, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, if she would like to raise her comments or questions, and we'll do our best to answer them.
Okay. And Ms. LaRue, were you able to hear Mr. Kleiser?
I caught about three fourths of what he said.
I think Mr. Kleiser was just trying to point out that there is additional information available to you and that you can submit questions. One of the ways you can do that is through the email address that you previously used to register for this hearing today.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, is there anyone else on the line who has joined the call who would like to make comments on the record to the commission today? I've checked my email and I don't have any indication that anyone is urgently trying to get into this session, so I believe that we've completed the part of the session where we hear from our registrants. Now that we've heard from all of our registrants today, would any member of the commission like to make any remarks? Mr. Commissioner Kenny?
No, thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Coleman?
No comments, but I do see that we just had someone join us with the spelling of the name, T-E-R-R-A.
Thank you for spotting that. Let's backtrack. Did we have someone just join the call who's identified as Tara, T-E-R-R-A?
Yes.
Okay. So, would you be someone who registered under a Gmail account, Terry Spoon?
Yes.
For this session today? Okay. So, you have registered to address the commission, and let me just explain to you how that works. So, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and swear you in, and then once you've done that, you'll provide your full name and spell your name for the record, and then you can address the commission. Did you have any questions before we proceed to that, ma'am?
You said, raise my hand. How am I supposed to?
Yes.
Just raise?
You're basically promising to tell the truth, and that's how we get started, okay?
Okay.
So, if you would like to raise your right hand, ma'am, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the comments you're about to give are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Would you state your name and spell your name for the record, please?
My name is Tereya. It's T-E-R-E-A. Ambler.
Okay. And are you able to-- Okay. And what's your last name?
Ambler.
Would you spell that, please?
A-M-B-L-E-R.
Thank you very much. And what did you want to tell the commission today, ma'am?
Um, I was not in agreeance with the increase on the water. Also, just for the simple fact that in addition to the water bill, we also are responsible for the sewer bill, which is a separate bill, and I feel like it's going to start to become overwhelming with an increase in water, and then we also have to pay sewer as well.
So, we do have two commissioners here today to hear your comments, Commissioner Kenny and Commissioner Coleman. Was that all that you wanted to tell them today, ma'am?
Yes, for now.
Okay. So, please let me know, commissioners or counsel for the parties, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Ambler?
Commissioner, no, Mrs. Ambler, thank you very much for your comments and concerns.
Judge?
Yes.
I would-- I would like to ask Ms. Ambler, what type of increases has she seen on her bill in the recent past?
Well, I did notice, like, where I stand at now, my water bill was running about $45 a month, and it actually has increased. It's now currently between like between $50 and $60 a month already.
And have you noticed on your bill any explanation? Are there, is there an increase in the, if you compare your bills to the amount that you're using in gallons of water or anything, is there a, any indication as to why there is an increase, or have you contacted the company to inquire?
Yeah, I do understand, like, based on the usage, it could increase or decrease based off the usage that I'm using in the house. But as I said before, the increase in the water bill, along with the sewer bill, is going to cause, to me, an overage in payments, like how Kansas City is set up, it's one, it's one bill, you know, whereas we have to pay two separate bills.
Yes, understood. All right, thank you, Ms. Ambler, for your testimony today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Alrighty, so I don't, I didn't spot any additional people who have joined the call. Is there anyone else on the call who needed to make comments to the commission today on the record? Okay, I don't see anyone, and I don't have any messages indicating someone is trying to join us. I did give the commissioners a chance before to make a closing comment, and I think that you've done that. Commissioners, if you have anything else to say, you can go ahead and do that now. Okay, thank you both so much, Commissioner Kenny and Commissioner Coleman, for being here today. On behalf of the commission, I would like to thank you for your comments today. Please be aware that anyone who is not able to attend today can make written comments by contacting the Office of the Public Counsel or by going to the PSC's webpage, where you'll find additional information about this case. This hearing is now adjourned. I hope everyone has a good day. We're now off the record. Thank you very much.